Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Monday, March 4th Board of Supervisors' regular meeting. We could all stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Moment of silence? Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Of a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion if there's no addendum items.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving into presentations, School Board report with Dr. Grimsley.
Good afternoon. It's such a nice day. Schools are on spring break, but I couldn't miss this opportunity to speak to all you wonderful people. February was a very eventful month, to say the least. We are very ready for spring to grace the area, as it has seemed to today. R C P S wrapped up its winter sports season with great success. While our basketball season did not result in a state championship this year, our teams played valiantly in the postseason with the following players being named to Second Team All District: Abigail Atkins, Chloe Jenkins, and Nolan Prince. The following earned First Team All District: Summer Shackelford and Andrew Deal. Second Team All Region was earned by Brooke Atkins and Andrew Deal. And finally, Summer Shackelford also earned First Team All Region recognition, a great accomplishment for our basketball program this season. Our Scholastic Bowl team also earned great success this month in the state tournament. The team traveled to Jamestown High School, placing third in the state. Congratulations to sophomore Ruth Cassette, who scored an impressive toss-up point total of 1,700 points. Congratulations also to senior Najette Ryan for her total 820 points and junior Emma Brown for her total 600 points. Congratulations to Coach Nazar and the whole Scholastic Bowl team. Last month, R C H S celebrated National FFA Week. The week was full of agriculture-themed spirit days and culminated with a hilarious fundraiser where four staff members with the most cash in their designated cups had to wrangle Hank the mini pig in a mud pit and transport him safely back to his pen. The four winners were math teacher Sally Shackelford and Scott Stevens, SRO Deputy Chris Eubin, and R C H S Principal Carlo Seward. Deputy Eubin emerged victorious in both rounds, catching Hank and returning him safely to his pen. The fundraiser was enjoyed by all, and Hank received a nice bubble bath afterward, courtesy of the small animal care class. You know how much I love pigs if you see my Facebook. I actually taught one of my pigs to say mama.
Okay.
No lie. Really. I'll show you the video. I sing chicks to sleep, and I've taught my pig how to say mama. Last month, the third graders participated and competed in the 2024 Read Bowl, a reading competition between classes and schools from all over the country. In total, R C E S third graders read an impressive 123,885 minutes over the course of four weeks. Congratulations to all of them. Seventh graders were able to visit the Virginia State Capitol in Richmond last month as part of their annual civics field trip. They also were able to visit the House chambers, the Science Museum, and visit with Delegate Weber, who shared his experiences in the political sphere. Students were able to ask questions and were able to get a firsthand account of how the General Assembly sessions work. Finally, R C H S students leapt into success on Leap Day, becoming inducted into the National Honors Society. Twenty-one students were inducted at its 2024 induction ceremony, which took place in the afternoon amidst family members and the entire student body, who were able to join in the celebration and cheer on their peers. Next week, on March 12th, just two days before I have the privilege of driving the band to Philadelphia on a school bus, I will be presenting the superintendent's budget to the school board for consideration. Just this weekend, we received some baseline numbers for calculation, so we will be revamping our draft budget throughout the week for presentation at the hearing on the 12th. Thank you so much for participating in the joint meeting last month. It really is such a great thing when we can work together to find solutions to these significant community challenges. As always, we thank you for your support and advocacy for the youth and families of Rappahannock County. And I do have a little note here to mention, too. I know this was a topic of concern of the supervisors last year. I think, Ms. Smith, you brought this up, too, with summer programs for parents. It's been a significant need and a challenge for our summer school, having part-day funding. We have funding for four hours a day throughout four weeks in June for our summer school program, but that was a barrier. We invited, I think, 123 or so families for summer school, but many could not make it, almost half, because of not full day and having childcare making those commitments. So, we are in the process of collaborating with CCLC, Headwaters, 4-H, to complete a whole five-day-a-week, full-day program all summer long. So, we are really working hard on this. We've received some commitments of funding, grants, and all sorts of things, but we are finalizing and crunching some numbers in the next couple of weeks or so. We've already opened up interest forms for families to see, but this was a huge need. We heard from the parents, and it's been a great collaboration between all of them. So, it'll be just one program. So, our summer school will be in all these summer camps that CCLC offers, and Headwaters and 4-H are all going to be one program. So, we're pretty excited about it. We'll see how it goes. It's called Spark, so we'll see how that goes.
What's it stand for?
Oh, gosh. I have to remember that.
Summer programs.
Of arts and recreation knowledge. There's all those pretty terms. Ask Jenny Capso. She's the one that created a lot of this, but she's amazing.
That's great news, Shannon.
You have any questions for me?
Anything?
Okay. Go ahead.
Thanks for the joint meeting and also meeting recently with Chair Donahue and me. I had a question that I asked previously, and I think now maybe it's time to put a finer point on it, and that relates to your expected average daily membership and then the potential revenue role that, I believe the number is 50-something, students who are called non-local students, who are now in our school system for various reasons, their presence in our school system, I understand, will drive, to some extent, state funding of our school system by way of, all other things being equal, an increase in funding because it increases our average daily membership. And so, I think as we get close to hearing from you all your bottom line on what you expect to receive from the state and what you will need from our general fund and local tax sellers, I think it would be helpful to just hear one more time what your ADM looks like and what those non-resident students mean in terms of additional revenue from the state for our school system.
Sure. So, right now, our total pre-K through 12 enrollment is 792, so that's up from previous years. The state is projecting us at an ADM of 728 for next year's budget, although with the 792 enrollment numbers, if you deduct out preschool-age students, we're probably looking closer to like 735, 740, but we won't know that till March 31st. ADM gets locked in, yeah, March 31st, so we'll know a better plan for that. As far as your non-residents, every year, they have to apply for slots for the next year. We wait for ADM, we lock in class sizes, and if there's not room in certain class sizes, they're not able to come, and they have to meet certain criteria to stay. The benefit of that is you're filling in seats that were empty before, and now you're plugging those in that come with about 6,000 extra state dollars every time you do that. So, that's why that's helpful.
Okay. So, and I think the corollary question I asked last time we talked about this was the extent to which the revenue associated with those additional members in our school system would outpace or outstrip the related expenses for those students being in the system.
That'd be nice. So, you've seen a lot of what's happened in Richmond in the past couple of weeks. So, to give you an example, well, there's lots of additional costs through mandates and initiatives without dealing first with the funding formula, which is something we've been dealing with for a while. So, that would be true had a lot of these provisions not taken place within this General Assembly session. Over 40 bills, new bills, that have associated costs, were put through the General Assembly. So, for instance, here are just a few that impact our own budget here. So, the raises, of course, is a big one I always bring up, because that's the biggest one. You have so many staff members, you have to apply that percentage, the cost is really high. You get 17% from the state to do that. So, a 10% increase in two years costs you $1 million, and the state will only pay 17% of that. And that makes it very difficult for us to keep up with those types of mandated increases. Another one is the changing ratios with staffing. So, they may say, you need so many staff for this many students. They did that, and the counselor provision is changing. So, now where we only says we need two counselors, this will change it to three. That's another whole person. So, the salary, you look at a $65,000 salary package with benefits and everything, that's a lot of money, one position. Another one, else teachers are changing. That ratio is changing based on your English language proficiency levels, so that can change year to year. So, this year, I need, I have a one teacher and an aide to serve all those students, but if I have more Level 1 students, I may have to hire another whole teacher, just based on their level of English language proficiency. Another one. Out of nowhere, for the Virginia Literacy Act implementation, great stuff, really is, and they did give us some set aside money to get all the training done and get some resources, but all of a sudden, now we can't use Title I money to support our reading specialists. That paid 100% of our reading specialists. So, now we have to pull that into the local budget, but you have to have one. But before, it was federally funded. So, there's just three that I mentioned here that affect us. So, those are the types of things. And based on the bottom line in the House budget, their proposal, we're getting less money than we did this year to do all that from the state. It's kind of criminal, don't you think?
And then, the last big picture question, which I talked to you about the other day, and it just suddenly struck me. Is it reasonable to say that, all things being equal, your annual operating budget is somewhere, just call it maybe $14 million, and all in, the state contribution to that operating budget is $5 million, which, or...
Three and a half.
Three and a half, plus other federal and additional money, lunch money. So, I think it's important for people to understand that the state funding question, when you look at it in terms of bottom-line numbers, if it's three and a half, or if you add in all the other federal and additional school lunch money, you're at best getting up to $5 million of a $14 million operating budget for the school system.
Correct.
And I think when you think about how little that is in the grand scheme of things flowing into the county, we can understand the challenge that we face every year.
Yeah, and it's just compounding each year, it seems, and that's why we really have to work together to find some type of a solution for that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Grimsley, I know we had this conversation last year, and it was a tougher year to make progress, and we had a good feeling this year about that 1.5 million being in the governor's budget from the get-go, and that might put us in a better position than what we are now. What can we do to help you get that money back in the budget?
So, the Conferies are meeting this week. I think the next step is to, if we can communicate with them, I mean, we've been reaching out to everybody we can, doing the Richmond visits, sending letters, face-to-face meetings, but the Conferies are meeting behind closed doors this week. Today, they may present a new General Assembly budget to send off to the governor, so maybe we can reach them and keep contacting about, you know, the situation here in Rappahannock. It is so anomalous compared to just about everybody else. So, it's really tough when we have so few residents, so few votes in Richmond, to be able to make this case, but I think the more they hear from us, you know, I think that's the best we can do.
Yeah. The quote in the paper was really alarming to someone, just to say, well, the solution to Rappahannock's problem is that they need to raise their taxes.
Yes.
You know, that's not going to sit well in this county, especially when you consider that the issue is caused by a cap that is just plain unfair and unjust.
Absolutely.
So, whatever we can do to help you, please let us know, and thank you for fighting the good fight for our kids.
Absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. If the Board would allow me, I would like to take a few minutes and express my frustration over what is happening in Richmond, as it appears it will have a serious negative impact on our county's budget. Our citizens have long bemoaned the effects of Virginia's local Composite Index, the so-called LCI, which places an unfair limit on our supplemental school funding aid from the state. I say unfair because Rappahannock County is one of only a couple of counties across the entirety of Virginia that suffer financially from the impact of LCI calculations on our rural agricultural economy. The unfairness of the LCI cap on state support caused our delegate, Michael Weber, to lead an effort to remove that cap last year. His effort received bipartisan support, and 100% of House Democrats and Republicans supported his bill removing that cap. The bill was put on hold while a study was done, and that study demonstrated the bipartisan support was clearly warranted. Our funding in Rappahannock County is behind both national and regional averages, and our neighboring state, West Virginia, is funding their schools at a 25% higher rate. For inexplicable reasons, now that Democrats have the majority in our legislature, they no longer support fixing the effect of the LCI cap. This year, new additional mandates are being imposed across the board on Virginia's schools. Again, Richmond is not differentiating between the needs of the vast majority of Virginia counties and those of our smaller rural, relatively low enrollment schools in Rappahannock. By way of example, we have only one elementary school for K through 7 and only one high school, 8 to 12, with a total of approximately 740 students. Yet, the new mandates require us, among other things, to add counseling services as though we had multiple schoolhouses and thousands of students. What is clear to me, based on the speeches given in Richmond, is that there's a fundamental misunderstanding of how the school funding formula works for those of us in low-density rural counties. Lip service is given to the value of our agriculture and the system Governor Yonkin calls putting students first. Yet, there's apparently no willingness to help individualize the new education mandates or to compensate for LCI caps that are not fair. One size does not fit every county. While the intent to improve education may be laudable, breaking the bank for a small rural county, making its way on agriculture and tourism, is not a laudable result. We simply cannot abide by Richmond's big mandated payroll increases, apparently an attempt to compensate for years of ignoring these issues, or requiring the addition of professional positions without assessing our need for them, especially when it is clear our formula must be updated to help us deal with these significant additions. Creating the budget is neither fun nor easy, but I ask that all in Richmond do one simple thing: act on the reality you recognized last year, and that was demonstrated by the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee report, and add our supplemental aid back into the budget to put Rappahannock on equal footing with other counties sharing our demographics. Please allow us, particularly in light of broad new educational mandates, to fulfill our obligations to ensure equality, caring, nurturing education for our county's children. Rappahannock County and its citizens decided a long time ago to keep Rappahannock rural and scenic, focusing on agriculture and tourism. We are proud of this decision, in part because we know we provide both protection and a gateway for one of the nation's most popular national parks. We make some sacrifices for this role, but it shouldn't work as a detriment to the quality of education we can offer our kids. Thank you for indulging me.
Well, I think we ought to put that in a letter with our county seal at the top, and I'll sign it and send it.
I'm happy to do that.
Do we need a motion to do that?
If you want to authorize her to speak on behalf of the Board, it would be wise.
I would make a motion to authorize the letter that was just read out loud to be put on stationery with the county seal and to be sent to anyone on whom it may have a positive effect in Richmond. And I would suggest that to make it a united front, all of the members of the Board sign the letter and send it.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd just add FedEx a copy to Delegate Russell.
Yes. Hand-delivered, no. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now on to the Company 4 report.
Good afternoon. First of all, the calls. There were 11 EMS calls in February, and we did not respond on seven of them. We got out on one, and our scorekeeper said that there were dispatcher errors on three. I've asked what that means, and I haven't heard. Our county's super dispatcher is on vacation, and so I don't have numbers from her. There were four fire calls, and we got out on one and didn't respond on three. So, this is Chief Nick's operations report. He's sorry he can't be here, but work takes him away from our area often. The EMT class has begun, and all seven that were in the EMR classes are enrolled and doing well. More drivers have been released to operate the utility and the ambulance, including me, so beware. Three new members have signed up to attend the EVOC class this month in Amosville, and we currently have a prospective member working with county recruitment and retention, who is a paramedic firefighter from another state and was a flight nurse, just a super candidate, and also trained in and worked in technical rescue. And she lives in our first-due area. Fundraising committee has scheduled a dance on March the 23rd, and we're hoping to raise a little more money.
Anything?
Questions?
Thank you very much for continuing your updates.
Thank you.
All right. Rapid Home, we have, oh, Joyce, okay.
Joyce is first.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Joyce Wanger, President of Rapid Home. Thank you very much for having Victoria and I come today to speak about Rapid Home. We are the largest nonprofit service organization for older adults in the county. We help to meet the needs, the myriad needs, of an aging population in a rural area with limited services and in an area where our population of older adults is growing. Our mission is to serve the health, safety, and social needs of older adults in this county so that we can all live independently in the homes we treasure and near the friends that we cherish for as long as possible. To do this, we provide numerous services and programs. They are designed for everyone, regardless of our backgrounds or our financial situations. We all need various kinds of support at various times in our lives as we are aging. Rapid Home is organized around volunteers, for all of us to help each other. It's sort of the neighbors helping neighbors concept, and that is really turning into all of us becoming better friends and now friends helping friends. We have a lot, we are a large organization. Our budget is $320,000. We have 650 members at this point, and we manage a business this size with a very strong board, with wonderful, wonderful volunteers, and with extremely qualified staff. I want to now introduce Victoria Lang. She's our executive director. She began her career as a psychiatric nurse, and then she moved into the corporate world, so she has the perfect background for running this organization for seniors. She's going to tell you a little bit more about some of the actual things that Rapid Home does to help all of us older adults in the county. Thank you. Victoria?
Thank you, Joyce. Okay, this is my first one of these, so if I screw up, forgive me, okay? But I do want to stress a couple of things that Joyce said. First thing I want to stress is, in 2015, we were formed on the village model, and that is neighbors helping neighbors. We are one of the few non-fee rural-based villages. We live on grants and donations, which means that huge budget that Joyce just put out to you guys, we have to go out and get every single year. In the nine years since we've been formed, we have grown from 50 members to 650 members, which is 30% of the senior population in Rappahannock County. That's huge. We have 80 volunteers, and thank God we have 80 volunteers, and we need more, who supply critical help. That's help in transportation back and forth to medical appointments, the picking up and delivery of groceries and prescriptions. They help ward off isolation and loneliness through friendly visits and phone calls. The services, the services we have provided in the last year, our transportation committee, our transportation volunteers did over 600, gave over 600 rides last year. 130 some were wheelchair rides. I'd like to remind you that Rapid Home is the only one in the county that has wheelchair-available vans. We have two of them, and they are constantly in use. We have caregivers, and what I mean by caregivers is we have a list of certified nursing assistants that have been vetted and had background checks by us, that we supply to friends or the relatives of friends who call in and say, I need a little extra help over here. We need somebody to come in at night to take care of my father. So, this is a list that they can get from us, and these are people that they provide. We have the Rapid the Door program. Rapid the Door was started during COVID. It was a program where we were talking through screens to our somewhat more isolated friends or those that we knew were having mobility issues. This has grown into a monthly program where we take a kindness gift, and what that kindness gift can be is, last, in February, it was a wonderful Valentine's card that was done by the after-school kids at Headwaters. It had hot chocolate and two cookies. We don't necessarily go for the gift, we go for the visit. I get wonderful feedback from our drivers' backs, saying I was invited in for tea, and, I mean, it's a wonderful experience. We do friendly visits, and this can be a weekly or monthly visit that one of our volunteers do to a friend that has reached out and said, I just need a little more socialization. Or it can be a phone call or a card that is sent. We have our Ready or Not, which is one of our newer programs, and it's a contingency-based program, and I'm not talking about financial contingency. I'm talking about the questions that you don't really want to ask yourselves when you retire. Can we stay here if I die? Can we stay here if you die? What happens if I end up in a wheelchair? Are we prepared for that? What if you get dementia? These are all questions none of us want to ask ourselves, but for to stay in the homes that we are in or to know when it's time to move on, we need to put those plans in place. We also have safety programs. We have, we have and install the Guardian Alerts, and that's the help I can't get up button that you push. We install those for free. We provide those for free. We work with the Castleton Fire Department. For the 9/11 blue signs that you see all over the county, we have somebody that goes out and installs those. We also do that for free for our seniors. We also do very minor house repairs. When we have the luxury of our volunteers going out and visiting people's homes, we can see when maybe your railing's not as tight as it should be, your stairs may need to be replaced, and depending upon their fiscal situation, that's either something that we can help them find a carpenter to do, or we can refer them to the benevolent fund. We have activities. We have at least a dozen social and educational activities a month, and examples of these can be potlucks, which everybody really likes. We also have speakers come in. We had a wonderful doctor from Valley Health come in last month and talk about advanced directives. Currently, right now, we just got an email from the library. They have a full house. We have a geology lecture going on that is, there's probably 50-some-odd people there right now. It's wonderful. We also have things that happen weekly and monthly. We also have things that happen weekly and monthly. We have a weekly walk and talk. We have a weekly stitch and bitch, which my mother does, so don't blame me. We have monthly grieving support group. We have a monthly conversations on aging group. And that's just to name a very few. Every interaction, we feel every interaction at Rapid Home is an opportunity to form a connection, to deepen a bond, and to establish long friendships. Together, we can create a county where older adults of all backgrounds and economic means can age in place with the support of a caring community. We are stronger together. We collaborate with the nonprofits and the government agencies. Examples would be the benevolent fund, the food pantry in Compass, the senior center, the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission, and the school system. And I'm sure I've left somebody out, so forgive me. All serving aging adults only strengthen the social net that we currently have. I'd like, if I have a few minutes, to give you an example of how this collaboration has impacted at least one of the seniors in the county. We're going to call her Jane Doe because it's obviously a made-up name. DSS had been working, that's the one I left out, Division of Social Services. DSS had been working with this particular woman for a couple of weeks. She knew she needed to go to the doctor. She hadn't had a medical appointment in years because she just couldn't get there because of her medical issues. God bless DSS. They worked with her, they worked with her. We had, as she needed a wheelchair van, we had one of our wheelchair drivers go over with DSS because they, she had established a trust, introduced the driver. We got her in the van. We got her to her medical appointment. We went back and forth to several medical appointments. It was then identified that she needed to go to the eye doctor. We got her to the ophthalmologist. It was determined that she needed cataract surgery. We had one of the CNAs go over two weeks prior and two weeks post this operation and put drops in her eyes twice a day. It was when the nursing assistant was over there that she discovered the house was just unsafe. It was full of trash because this woman could not get out to go to the dump. If she can't get to her medical appointments, she can't go to the dump. So with her permission, we had volunteers go in and literally clean the house out of the trash. So it became a safer environment for her to be in. We continue working with this lady today. 18 months, we're still going back and forth to medical appointments, dental appointments. The food pantry delivers her food and it is only because we all work together that we can service the needs of this particular woman. And she is just a single example. There are so many others. So that is what we do to keep our seniors in their home. We'll entertain any questions?
Great, great presentations. And my first question, which you answered at least generally, was the $320,000 operating budget. Is that, are there major, are there major grants that comprise most of that or is it a real varied revenue stream that, that?
It's a, it's a varied revenue stream. We do get grants from both PACT and from Northern Piedmont.
Okay.
But I would say that we also have some very generous donors who have helped us out a great deal. It's not quite 50/50, but it's pretty plus.
Okay. And then my other question, and I'm glad that we have fire and rescue folks in, in the room. At least in my mind, one area where I feel like we maybe could implement something and maybe there is a role for Rapid Home, maybe not. But your discussion of the Rapid the Door program made me think of this and that's a great name, by the way. We see in our community, and I know you know this, elderly people in particular who often, with no other option, when they need a little help, whether it's taking medication or maybe falling, will call for emergency services, which is often the right thing to do, but it is often perhaps not what's needed. And, and to the extent that those types of calls are frequent for particular citizens, it's always been my thought that maybe there, and I don't know what the term would be, but maybe there would be some system by which we implement someone who had a list and they would just regularly check on those people with the goal of reducing, hopefully significantly, those individuals' calls to our dispatch center and then the resulting use of equipment and volunteers and, and paid medical providers. So I just throw that out there because I wonder if there wouldn't be some shared interest both between our fire and rescue community and Rapid Home to look at some program like that.
I think there would be. And just to let you know, we do get phone calls from the sheriff's office when they've identified somebody that might, that's a senior that might be in need of our help. And we have gotten a call from fire and rescue too when it's, I'm not to say a nuisance call because I don't think any calls are nuisance calls, but calls that could probably be solved otherwise or even if they've identified somebody who might be a fall risk for us to give them a call and see if they would entertain the thought of us coming and installing one of the guardian alerts. So if called upon, we certainly try to answer. And I would welcome working with fire and rescue because they do see things we don't see.
Yeah.
And as you know, we do have Harold on our board and he is a great wealth of information as far as safety in the homes and what needs to happen.
Okay, thanks. Just anyway, it's food for thought. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you for the presentation and for the amazing work that Rapid Home does. You guys serve an incredible need in this county. And, you know, we're just so lucky to have folks like you who are willing to do this work because it's not easy.
Well, I tell you what, I feel very lucky to have the board we have and the staff I currently have because we certainly could not do it alone. And the partnerships we've been able to form with the other nonprofits in the area have been, have been absolutely incredible and rewarding. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized. Give us your name and your district because there are people on Zoom that can't see you and that would be great. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Terri Sutton and I live in Piedmont District. Gosh, I am so moved by what I heard here today. This is the most amazing county to live in, to, to grow a family, to build a business, to take, be an elderly person, have so many caring people. I'm just blown away. And I also, I've been to a number of meetings and not ever spoken to you all and I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. I know your jobs aren't easy. We are kind of a rowdy crowd sometimes, but you are deeply appreciated. And Mr. Curry and his staff as well, he and his team do an amazing job keeping our county running smoothly and efficiently, so thank you as well. I'm here today to ask a favor. A few years ago, you all created a matching tourism funds program. And last year, the Farm Tour and Sperry Fest submitted applications and you couldn't approve them because you didn't have a process yet, which everyone understood. And I'm hoping that as you work on your budget for next year, that you will include the process so we can access these funds because investing in tourism brings in more revenue, which will help us not fix our school budget, but maybe give a little help and also help other, other activities in the county. So I ask you to please consider this as you work on the budget. Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Public service announcement.
After the BZ, Anita Ramos, Hampton District. After the BZA meeting Wednesday night, somebody left this out in the street near the end of the evening. So if anyone here who attended that meeting or knows someone that attended that meeting who is missing their beautiful scarf, I have it. Gary knows how to find me. You all know how to find me, really. But anyway, I hope that it can find a new home. I'm not a butterfly person.
I just wonder if we should give it to Crystal to keep that county administration because maybe that's where somebody would go looking for it.
Yeah, because I let Gary know where I went in case.
I can't believe that Gary didn't want that beautiful butterfly scarf.
Thank you, Anita.
Thank you, Anita.
Yes, ma'am.
No presence today. Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. Almost forgot. Sorry. I sort of want to touch on the growth of our villages because after that last big huge meeting, that was very interesting and I do agree with the decision because it seemed to me to be on a technicality for a specific housing area. But a lot of people were talking about, oh my gosh, Rappahannock is going to become Loudoun County and that there were just, there are just so many people who are just horrified and they keep bringing up Loudoun County and I want to say, cool it. Here's the deal. Loudoun County left the barn door open decades ago, decades. If you look at Dulles, Dulles is in Loudoun County. I can remember working for a newspaper based in DC and I couldn't believe having to go clear out to Dulles because there was nothing there. If you look at Sterling, Virginia, that's Loudoun County. That's been building up for decades. When I was still built, selling houses in Leesburg, Lansdowne came up. Huge housing thing. And the interesting thing is we also had to keep track of, of traffic and everything and I had had tons of people coming by my specific site because they would get lost. I was not in a drive-by situation. And it was, everyone was getting funneled off into Lansdowne and there were so many buildings, office builders there that nobody came to my place. Nobody got lost. So that specific thing is not going to occur around here. Here's, I cannot draw and I'm not a techie, but I do have this thing that showed a map to you guys a long time ago. We have major highways. We have 29211 that comes down from DC into Charlottesville. We have I-66 that comes over. We have I-81. We do have 211 that comes through our county, but it doesn't do anything for us as far as helping us. Years ago, we used to have hundreds of leaf peepers in the fall. We used to have, I can remember, I came 42 years ago, there were tons of apple stands. When I-66 came, it vanished like poof, there was nothing there. Now we are lucky to be able to be having entrepreneurs, small businesses that are building up and, and they are, are bringing back the industry. That, that program, Buy Local, Buy Fresh, I think has helped us tremendously with all of our little agricultural things. Let me see, I don't want to get lost. The, oh, the comp plan mentions changing demographics. Okay. And it did specifically say how we had an aging population and we had to prepare for that. Here's the deal. Eventually, that comp plan is, needs to be addressed and redone because instead of an aging population, I am seeing younger families coming in. Our FAA, Future Farmers of America is growing, our 4H is growing. There are more kids who are actually coming here. Our little church is seeing more children. So I think those demographics are changing and I think the comp plan saying that growth in and around the villages is something we need to pay very close attention to. Phil Irwin used to come in and talk about paying attention to what the state legislature was doing. They are talking about affordable housing and how are they going to see Rappahannock? What are we doing to provide affordable housing? Our comp plan says specifically housing for the various income brackets. So how are we addressing that? Chuck Akry is doing that with his little Rush River Commons. But as far as other places in and around our villages, we need to be able to be encouraging people to build houses, to build houses. And there are also houses that need to be fixed up. People can do that. I mean, my mom used to say, don't expect to leave, to start where we left off. Kids can start with an apartment. They can start with house sharing. There are all different ways that we can be attracting kids to be living here and I'm hoping that, I'm, I'm starting to see that kind of community taking place. The other, okay, that's the end of that. I, I want to continue to recognize the work our fire and rescue squad is doing in Flint Hill. I think against all odds, they are, they're being persistent in pursuing, putting an organization together well. They're having a swing dance or a spring dance kind of thing, which is a way that I think Mr. Furbush, who was running against Gevey, had talked about, what are we doing with our fire and rescue to, to be doing things? And so I think, I think that organization is starting to come together and re-establish a community spirit that we used to have a long time ago. There used to be carnivals and things and as people died off, the support there sort of left. The last thing I will comment on. Communication. I want to commend the Board of Supervisors for having their meeting on February 10th. It was an effort to bring together a group of people and discuss various ways that they could learn about each other and also figure out ways to work together to accomplish a lot of the things that are in the pipeline that, that we need to address. Courthouse is one of them. I'm not going to beat that one, but that needs to be addressed as well. So I think there was a very unfortunate happenstance where a particular listserv sort of went off the rails on this. And the problem with that is there, it, it is appropriate to try to address correct information and, and get those, get those avenues open in, in a good way. And I think a couple people that I know have been trying to present correct information rather than this dispute of disinformation and all that kind of stuff, which I think is a detriment to everyone. Name-calling and that kind of stuff is not very grown up. And as I said before, the particular one, he's a very smart man and he can certainly improve his vocabulary on Rappahannock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheila.
Not seeing any more hands in the courtroom. We do have some folks on Zoom. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment, please raise your Zoom hand and be recognized. Not seeing any hands on Zoom. I'll go ahead and close public comment. Thank you. All right. Consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll second Van's motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Stephen.
All right. Appointments to Rappahannock County Recreational Facilities Authority.
Let's highlight the fact that I have not received any applications. You still have one vacancy and so please beat the streets.
I'm working on it.
Yeah, I'll keep going.
Yep. All right. Old Business, County Construction and Renovation Projects.
There's an update provided for you in the packet and I'll just run through and then there is an action step here that I'm looking for guidance from the board. Regarding the historic building envelope restoration, the exterior building scanning was completed over two days during, because of some snow. The second set of those plans or 2D plans from the outside of the building were, I received today. So that architect is, is starting to work on the plans for the envelope and he and I will be working with our maintenance staff on Wednesday morning to look at some of the damaged sections of the old church to make sure that there can be specific repairs identified for that structural, those structural members of that, that building. So that project is progressing. I'm going to skip ahead and then we'll come back to number two. I'm going to skip ahead and then we'll come back to number two. Commonwealth Attorney Office Roof Replacement, that project is complete. It was put to bid and the low bid was $14,036. So it was bid out, bid's received, and the work is done. So that's always good to, good to know. EMS Sheriff Garage Processing Building that's included in the capital budget for this year. Local architect Rick Lassard is working on that design. It is in the town, so it does require an architectural review board, review. We expect to submit an application to the ARB this week. And that ARB meeting is on March 18th. Pretty nondescript. It's essentially a three-way garage that has white clavered siding and a standing seam roof. I expect that the ARB will be happy. We've talked with the neighbor to the rear, just to brief them on the planned design. And they, they seem happy and actually borrowed the not-quite-white color of their home as the color of this structure. So I will send that ARB package out to the board when it's pulled together later this week. So that is finally progressing. Regarding the courthouse building expansion project, as the boards are aware, the RFP 24001 was sent out, published a few different ways. We did receive proposals and I've told others that there is an adequate but not overwhelming number of proposals that we have received. And so that's good. I think we have a very good pathway towards identifying a successful architectural slash engineering team to guide the board through the process to identify a selected concept, well finalized space program, identifies a selected concept, and then drive that concept through the various design stages on through to bidding and construction. So that's a, it's a lot to do. And the most important thing is finding a team that is, that fits our community, that understands the intricacies of Rappahannock County, the town of Washington, and has demonstrated through their past work that they can design projects that suit the area where they're working. So they know what to do to design a big city courthouse maybe, and they also know what to do to design a very small-town courthouse. And if they have shown that they can do both of those in the past, they can probably figure ours out. So when, when the board authorized me to release the RFP to seek the proposals that are now in hand, I told, there was, we got bogged down a little bit in conversation about how were we going to select the, the offer who best meets our needs? And I said, well, at least let's get the RFP out and we'll cross the bridge of how we're going to select them later. Well, today's later on figuring out that process. I am recommending, as shown here in the board packet, that the county administrator form a committee consisting of several individuals to include the board chair, a second board member, myself, the county attorney slash Commonwealth attorney, one or both clerks depending on their interest, and then two citizens. That committee would then review the printed proposals, arrive at a ranking based on the requirements and so forth in the RFP, shortlist the defined list of firms, and invite them to onsite presentations. And then make a recommendation of the, ultimately, the ranking of firms to the board. The way professional services are selected in Virginia, it's called competitive negotiation. You don't bid. It's not a low bid. The theory is you, you don't want the person who can design the bridge the cheapest. You want the person who can design the bridge that works. And so you identify the firm that can design a courthouse that meets our needs and fits our needs. And then once you rank those offers, then you be, and you set that ranking, one, two, three, et cetera, you negotiate with the top-ranked offer and you determine financially whether you can come to terms with that offer. And if you can, great. You bind a contract and you move on your way. If you can't, you cast them aside, you go on to number two, and one is never to be discussed again. That's the way you do it in Virginia for professional services. So the most important thing then is how do you come at that, come to the ranking? And so my recommendation is here in the page, as I just reiterated. I'm looking for concurrence for the board or a recommendation of an alternative. I did include onboard docs and I passed out for you at your spots, a document that identifies pertinent portions of the RFP relative to the selection process, as well as the Code of Virginia that identifies as envisioned, this would not be a public body subject to FOIA, relative to noticing the meeting three days in advance. However, based on the RFP and based on FOIA, if it was to be a public body formed by this board, then we've committed to the offers that we won't be releasing the information about the proposals until an award is made. And the Code of Virginia allows you to do, perform all these deliberations in closed meeting. So that's the path, the options forward, and you have my recommendation.
Thank you, Gary. I will make a motion then to authorize the county administrator to, and I'm going to put my own words in here, to using the Virginia Supreme Court guidelines to form an advisory panel committee to help with this process on items one through four. Is that detailed enough?
Thank you.
I'll second your motion. I think that's, it seems to be the one, one action item that would come out of at least today's discussion, the closure of the RFP process. That makes sense to me.
So the way it's phrased on the agenda, it would make it sound like you've already put together county administrator-formed, or is that administrator hyphen-formed committee?
That's what it meant. I apologize for the poor wording.
Okay. Well, I don't know that there is a better way to communicate it. I just had to make sure. The way that I read it was what you intended.
I have not. I have, I have discussed with a few citizens if they'd be interested. And that's as far as I've gotten. And I've talked to the Commonwealth's Attorney. I have not yet talked to any, either of the clerks, quite frankly. I assume that the clerks will be jumping at the opportunity.
Well, I think it's great that we would do it this way. But my recollection is from when the building committee was disbanded, was that, the criticism there was that that committee wasn't open enough and there weren't minutes. And there wasn't a clear way to see what they had done. And this is a committee that will be a committee of the county administrator and definitely not have to keep minutes, nor will it be subject to FOIA. So it will even be further closed to the public than the building committee. So I just don't understand how folks are reconciling that paradox, that it will be more closed than ever. But that was your criticism of the building committee?
Are you saying me?
Well, you in particular, but I didn't hear anyone disagreeing with you.
That was not a criticism, it was a point. But anyway, I'll just say for this, this was on, in that October meeting, my suggestion was to use the Virginia Supreme Court guidance to come up with an advisory panel. So if you go to page four through 12, it shows you how to do this. And in an RFP process, there's just protocol that people want to follow. I'm not a professional, I'm not an engineer or architect. But if you read the guidance, it says, hey, form an advisory panel like this and move forward. That was my suggestion in October. I genuinely was not trying to criticize anybody over minutes. There was a point about something else, but I hear you. I just wanted to add, though, about the motion that I made. I don't necessarily want to limit it to two constitutional officers or two citizens. So can I just change it to a minimum? If, if more constitutional officers want to be involved.
I'll accept your friendly amendment on the second.
And I'm assuming that the citizen judges would have included in the citizen part, correct? They're not.
Well, they're not one of the others, but they are included within the Supreme Court guidelines. It's not clear to me whether their schedules would allow involvement in all steps, but maybe some steps.
I just want to make sure that we do have all those parties involved. Okay.
Any other discussion?
I just hope that everyone realizes that this is the second time that we've all embarked on this journey together. And we did choose to include these people on our first iteration of doing it as a committee of the board. However, it was done in a different style, not as formalist style. But these people were consulted. And if you all want to formalize it and that makes you feel better, and this is how you're committing to do it now, I just hope that we arrive at a fruitful place at the end of this road, this time.
And I, I do want to share that while it wouldn't be a public body that would require advanced notice of a meeting and entering closed meeting, the records are public and they would be releasable. However, there would be a restriction available during the vetting process. And once an award is made, then the file's open. And that's what we told everybody in RFP. And it would be open to everybody, including whatever notes are taken during the process.
All right. I'm going to move for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
We'll get on it.
New commercial activity and related matters, Mr. Woodson?
Sure, I'll just, I'm largely an echo what the mayor of the town of Washington, I think, said recently. Rush River Commons, the, the food pantry building, many of you have probably seen it driving by, is framed in. The small office building adjacent to it is, is beginning to be framed in. And it's my understanding then that the, the housing component of that project, all of which is within the town and not part of the previously agreed-upon boundary line adjustment, it's all in the town. It's all been reviewed by the Architectural Review Board. So it's now just in ongoing construction phase. I did receive a complaint about truck traffic blocking access to the post office, but that has been resolved. And I again want to thank the property owner, Mr. Akri, and Mr. Burke, who's been operating as, as his site oversight manager for really being sensitive to any adverse effects on neighbors or traffic during this process. I think the construction scene is going to calm down now, to some extent. And then separately, I, I mentioned last time that regarding the parking situation related to increased staffing at the little Washington, still an ongoing concern. I do have a request in Navidot to mark more clearly some no-parking areas so that traffic can flow better through the town. So that's underway. But it's, I think for the most part, the project, while significant in the town of Washington at Rush River Commons, it's been going more or less smoothly vis-à-vis traffic and trouble for neighbors. So again, grateful to the property owner for being sensitive to that.
Now, you were working on another fire hydrant somewhere?
Yeah. And I'm, the, the town really wants to take the lead on that process. So there's a, there's a, there's a hydrant removed on Piedmont. It's on the main water line, but outside of the town. And so that, I in fact was in touch with the mayor recently about that. And we'd also like to use the opportunity, if we are able, to identify other potential sites for hydrants that might make sense. And I thought perhaps I could talk to Mr. Stevens to coordinate that effort. But I think to the extent that we have a town with a water system without overdoing it, it, it makes good sense. And I should mention that I have a constituent on Grandview who recently received notice from his homeowner, homeowner insurance provider, that they were, and this might not be an exact, exactly correct summary of what he received. This is the second time I've had a constituent raise this with me. Their homeowner's insurance provider basically said because of distance to a hydrant, which out here, obviously, that's not, it doesn't seem like a reasonable measure of, of your access to fire mitigation measures. But nevertheless, he, I think, received a rate increase. And so the question is, what can we do from a county government perspective to communicate with insurance providers? And also, what might we be able to do in terms of hydrant expansion? But recognizing that you can't really do that without a water system.
So the insurance world works off of ISO ratings. And there are urban and rural ratings, and it has a lot to do with the availability of water. Having a pond on or near your property can help. And so there are a lot of different things that can affect that. And I'm sure Mr. Stevens could identify all of those variables and see if there are any that a local government could affect. And then regarding Rush River, I did want to say that Mr. Burke reached out to the county, myself and Mr. Cornell, to talk about phasing and how they are wanting to safely phase in the new buildings up front as they come online. And I think we're having good conversations about that. So the food pantry can open in a safe way before the residential's done and maybe before the front office is done, as long as there's proper separation and proper life safety in place.
I know we enjoyed dry weather for a long time when that project started. Have there been issues with runoff or pondings?
I have not. There's one particular neighbor across the highway who I'm sure knows how to get in touch with Mr. Burke. And I'm sure, if that's happened, I'm sure they have.
Yeah. And I've been over to that property and there definitely was some runoff that was hanging up in their pond. And, and the Akri team made a commitment to them at the outset that whatever, whatever happened to their pond during the process, despite all their bust-up roots, would be a draw.
All the water from this site goes into that pond.
Yeah.
Right.
It's the way it routes and so.
Yeah, I remember that conversation from where it was planned.
Do insurance companies take the ponds that we've?
Oh, yeah.
Ponds are included.
Well, I think it's more of a case by case, but yeah.
Grandview might be a tough one.
It's kind of on a ridge.
Yeah. It is a grand view.
All right. Thank you for that.
Thank you for the question.
Virginia DEQ Climate Response Network, well-approved.
Yes, board members will remember, this has been a longstanding item. It's been held up in the DEQ's property side and working with the Attorney General's Office to get ease, an easement and plat prepared. I was alerted a couple of weeks ago now that the process was done. We received a draft. And then we received a final version after I made some comments. Those documents are attached. My original thought was that the board would have to hold a public hearing to grant to interest in this real property because that's normally what you have to do. But that code section, and I checked with Mr. Goff, doesn't apply to state. So if you convey it to the state, then you don't have to do the public hearing process or another locality. So you don't need to do this. This would encumber a small area of the back corner of the four acres that's in the town setback for the easement. And then inside the setback for the actual well, which is really just a 10 by 10 easement, was selected to be as out of the way as possible. And it's tough to get your positioning here, but Mount Salem and Porter Street are up here. This little property that says Rappahannock County is the white building where our paramedics are housed. Sheriff's Office would be over here. So this is the gravel road that heads back behind and to where the radio tower and building are located in this area. The proposed storage building and processing building is in this area, just this side of the radio tower building. So this is all the way in the back. Avon Hall is, is on the back line. And there's a 25-foot setback here. So this temporary easement is in that setback if they ever have to maintain the well. And then the well itself is just inside the setback, off really in the corner where it's out of the way. And the idea is this well would be in place for the next 100-plus years and would be a way for climatologists to review groundwater over long periods of time. So this site was viewed as better than the school site for various reasons. So if the board wanted to move this forward, you would authorize the chair to sign the easement that is attached and made part of this agenda item.
And we start talking about this, what, two or three years ago?
It was a while ago.
Yeah.
It was a while ago.
Well, then I'll move to authorize the chair to sign the provided deed of easement, authorizing the Virginia DEQ to access county property to advance and monitor our climate response well.
That's very well stated.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
I just want to say that, you know, we don't talk a lot about resource management as a board. We probably should talk about it more, but our plates are already full with a lot of other things, whether we anticipate them or not. But in terms of long-term planning, this is probably something that we should spend more time on. And I'm glad we're doing this so we can start to get numbers and a foundation for future planning.
And what wasn't said is this is a state project. State will advance the well, monitor the well, it'll be connected to cellular and all that stuff.
Great.
We don't have to pay for it, other than our time through now.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Okay. General Assembly. Goodness.
This probably should have been an old business. I just apologize, I dropped it probably in the wrong spot, but because it was new business last month. It's just a rundown of some of the bills that you've been following and updated this on March 1st, so there might have been a little bit of activity yesterday, I'm not sure. House Bill 818 is seeking to define meetings and public business relative to gatherings. This comes out of a court case. This appears it is going to move on through.
Is that Prince William County?
Yes.
Okay.
It's still not crystal clear, but it's clearer. There's always going to be some subjectivity. One of the important things that did come out of this is it makes it clear that if members of this body go to a meeting of another body, it's not a board meeting.
Well, I mean, and we need legislation to explain that, apparently.
Unpaved road maintenance flexibility, we talked a little bit about that. There's companion bills. This also appears to be flying through, that any issue. The secondary road program that will be entering here shortly with briefing in April and a public hearing in May is the process through which the board allocates funding to generally hard surface or gravel roads. What this does is it expands your ability to not only hard surface those gravel roads, but perhaps keep some roads gravel and just improve them from a drainage or grading perspective. This was led by Leavon County, who has a ton of gravel roads in their western front. So I think this is probably something that the board could use at some point in time, particularly when we get to a point where there aren't any more gravel roads that people want hard surfaced. SB 544, Chair Don Hey and I were talking about this just before the meeting. This is the one land use bill that got through. Most of the others were killed. But it started out as disallowing a special exception for short-term rentals in an accessory dwelling unit. Then in committee, it got morphed into disallowing short-term rentals in a primary residence and totally eliminated the ADU part. And finally, a crossover, they fixed the name to take ADU out of the name of the bill. This has made it all the way through, and it's made so far through the crossover process. What it says is that new ordinance cannot be adopted that require special exception. So if you already have one, then you made it before the wire. There's some confusion, however, what that means relative to when a board amends an ordinance that pre-existed. When does it ever become new? Anyway, you look at it, it's the state trying to tell you that you cannot require a special exception. At the committee hearing, the patron basically said, well, this doesn't mean you can't, just say you can't have them at all, just as you can't have a special exception.
Specific to the primary residence?
Yeah. No, yeah, yeah. And so you could just preclude them. When asked what primary residence meant, the patron also said, well, the localities will have to figure that out, because really, there's no definition.
That sounds about right.
Yeah. So that's what we're looking at. HB 1461, another short-term rental property bill that wasn't on my radar and just came up last Friday when I was in a regional meeting. And it's related to locality's ability to prohibit a lessy of a sublessy operator. So it's trying to get at apartment buildings and the tenant being able to rent the space out for a short-term rental. I don't know how much it'll affect us, but there were some terms added here recently recommended by Ms. Graham to some of the short-term rentals to try to make sure this didn't happen when people are trying to get around our rules and not pay taxes. The HB 800 and SB 713, which was the pole attachment bills, those have been heavily substituted, and it seems like everybody's either equally happy or dissatisfied with the bill, and they're moving through and they will get approved. There are companion funding measures in both the House and Senate bills for about $30 million, million for FY '22 VADI projects, of which ours is one, intended to fund the commitments made in process of those other two bills. You can see there's a long list of failed bills that were very happy. Some are continued to 2025. In some cases, that kills them. In other cases, we just need to pay attention next year. All the solar ones eventually died. But that is an area where there's going to be continued pressure with the state having statewide goals to provide power for our urban areas at the expense of rural areas.
When I was reading about all of this LCI issues throughout Commonwealth, I mean, the one county that put in a bunch of solar panels to help, their LCI just went up big time because they're making money off their solar panels.
Your assessed value goes up.
It's just insane. But anyway.
Yeah.
All right. Yes.
I'd worry about that, but I think ours is maxed out already.
Ours is maxed, so they can't make their LCI any higher this year.
Unless they go over 800, I mean, we can only hope for the best.
Hey, don't give them something to think about. All right, Community Action Agencies Program. Mr. Carney.
Mr. Carney asked if I could put something on the agenda. I provided some very preliminary or high-level information. Some of you may have heard of some projects that Skyline CAP has been doing in Madison. And Skyline CAP used to provide a Healthy Families program here under contract. But our community action agency, who administers a community action program, is People Inc. And each cap is assigned to a particular area. And so ours is People Inc. Your representative on People Inc. is Gail Crooks. She reached out to me ahead of this meeting and said, hey, I see this on the agenda, anything going on? And I told her, this is just the very general, this is what caps are and provide some information as food for thought that the board might want to better understand and receive a presentation or list of programs that the agencies provide at a later time. And anything else that you wanted to cover?
No, Mr. Atkins on the Planning Commission had circulated this email, and he had, talking about the wonderful things that had gotten done between Skyline CAP and Madison County. And I thought, I read the article, and I thought that, you know, it was really, really interesting what they were doing down there. So I thought it was, since I've been on the board, I have not had a presentation from these folks. And so I thought it was, you know, worthwhile to kind of circle back around. I know that they have come and spoken before. I just, I hadn't been on the board, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we were covering bases and keeping abreast of our partners and what they do.
The housing program in Madison is levered by a state grant that's funneled through the Rappahannock Rapid and Regional Commission that's funding some housing in Madison, Culpeper, and Fauquier. I don't think there's any nor she none here. I know in the, more than six years ago, there was some thoughts about People Inc. doing a housing program here, and that didn't matriculate for various reasons. And I doubt that they would stick their neck out to do it again unless the board signaled that that was something you were interested in.
Wasn't Skyline CAP at the helm of the Head Start program?
They were as well, that's right.
That would, and it looked like from the press that was circulated that perhaps the leadership has changed in that organization.
That's possible. I know Mr. Yowell is their finance person, who also happens to be a board member in Madison, so he's been my point of contact. I don't know how or why Skyline CAP was running the finances for our Head Start program.
Before my time, too.
Yeah.
We got here at a bad time, Gary.
But they were. Yeah, they were. And, but we're just not eligible anymore from a demographics perspective for that. But I think, I'm sure People Inc. would love to come in and give you a general presentation if we invited them.
I think that would be a good idea. I work with People Inc. in another role I serve, and we have several, there are several crossover agencies, and sometimes when you're working with these different agencies, what one can do and the services they provide, it's confusing. So I think that would be an excellent idea to have them come and do a presentation.
All right.
One thing I wanted to raise, since Van added this as an agenda item, and I talked to Ms. Comer about it recently, since she's, she knows Fauquier County better than anyone I know. There was a really interesting article, and it was an article about something I've been observing for the last year or so. And many of you will remember a restaurant on Route 17 outside of Warrenton called Ben and Mary's Steakhouse. And we went there once, and I'll leave it at that. But it is now, through the work, and I just looked up some of the reporting on it, it really moved quickly, but the Foothills Housing Corporation, this is the photo caption, transformed the former Ben and Mary's Steakhouse on US 17 into four new apartments while preserving the building's recognizable exterior. And I know, and to Ms. Gressinger's point, my thought, whenever anyone raises the question of affordable housing in Rappahannock County, my question is, gosh, why don't we find a way to work with what we have as opposed to building new stuff? Because this is Rappahannock County, and I think we're pretty much wired against a lot of new stuff. So I wonder if as part of a discussion with regional organizations that look at the question of housing, if this organization, Foothills Housing Corporation, might be worth chatting to.
That corporation might have been stood up particularly for that project, which is another one of the projects that was funded through the state funding that's administered through the Regional Commission. And we just had an update on that at our last meeting. But we can definitely get the right people in the room.
Yeah, I mean, I was driving down Tiger Valley on Saturday, and I saw a number of abandoned properties. And now I understand that deeds and ownership and all of that might preclude someone from purchasing those or make it too difficult to bother with. But nevertheless, when you go around the county, there are many dwellings, and we've seen the stats as part of the census that are not occupied, not inhabitable. The question is, how do we do a better job in sort of making life easy for people who want to acquire those properties and turn them into housing without building new stuff? So, just a thought.
Ms. Crooks did reach out via chat, saying, we do have an MOU with Skyline CAP for Healthy Families. It's a non-dollar MOU.
I wonder, too, as part of this conversation, and also to refresh the Planning Commission, the RRC work that was done a few years ago on affordable housing.
There was a housing study completed, and the comp plan was done months before that study was done.
Right.
And so it basically references that the study was ongoing and that information would have to be added in later. So Patrick Monney has never come and given a presentation on that. He could, I would recommend we wait till after the budget, but.
I would recommend we wait until after the budget, too. But what I wanted to say, and that was my recollection, too, Gary, was that it may be helpful in framing these conversations if you would circulate those materials, because some of the players have changed to both bodies, and that way we can read that study and have that in our mind as we take this topic forward.
Yes, that's all on the Regional Commission's website, and I'll send a link.
That'd be great. Big help.
I think that is a great idea, that they have them come give us a presentation after the budget.
Okay.
If you guys are amenable.
Patrick's a good guy, it's always nice to see him.
And just keep the conversation rolling. I know that Mr. Atkins is a huge, he's a champion of it, so I think it's a good thing to keep an eye on.
Yep. All right, going ahead to move into the First Amendment protections, Mr. Carney.
Oh, so I asked Mr. Curry to put this on the agenda apropos our, the retreat that we did, and the facilitators had mentioned having, you know, our county attorney come up with some protocols so that during public comment generally, the public is protected and we are protected, everybody is, so that we can make sure that our meetings are, just don't overstep. And we don't have anything currently in place. So I know that we have a lot going on, I just wanted to put this on there so, because I thought it was a really big takeaway for me from that meeting. And I know that we've talked about public comment apropos Zoom, and we had a big discussion about that, and this all rolls into the same thing. So I just wanted to keep it on everybody's radar and make sure and see, I don't know, take a temperature, but I'd be fine to address this sort of after the budget, but it's something that we would need Mr. Goff to look at and kind of come up with, hey, here's, here are the guidelines, here are the parameters.
I wonder if we could see what other counties are doing, just copy and paste if it makes sense for Rappahannock County or Edit.
You'd certainly want legal counsel to review it, because not all other counties perhaps have reviewed things with their legal counsel, particularly those who seek to cut off public comment, which is generally not allowed.
And I think that was, if I remember correctly, during that discussion, during our retreat, it was something that had happened in Alomaral County.
That's right.
And like, people were kind of going crazy, and it got pretty ugly. And the question is, what do you do in that situation, if anything?
And I also just want to make sure that as a public body, we don't get confused with our own power and silence the community.
Right, right.
That's my biggest concern. I mean, I think that we'll all be fine in a meeting, I just want to make sure that people have their voice.
Ultimately, if somebody stands up and says a number of objectionable things, the chair should be well informed by legal of what they can't do, which is cut them off.
Exactly.
Short of the five minutes, three minutes, or whatever guidelines that she set. And so having that, you know, having a script for her to refer to was probably valuable in that case.
That's the point. So is this something we could kind of slow-track? Till after the budget? Or how are you feeling, Mr. Goff?
I think that it's actually a lot simpler than it sounds, because pretty much you can't viewpoint, you know, discriminate. So somebody stands up and starts saying, aye, Hitler, all that, you just got to let it go on. Now, you can just impose very strict time limits, but you got to apply that equally. And that's where I think sometimes the board might like what somebody's hearing, let it go on for six minutes. You don't like what the other guy's saying, you cut him off at three. But the Alomaral county attorney came up with a pretty good brief about it.
Oh, okay.
And I think I shared it with Gary or something. I mean, I shared so much, and he doesn't know what day it is. So, yeah, we'll get, let's say, August meeting, have it ironed out completely.
Oh, by then, for sure.
Hopefully before then, yeah.
Gary's like, let's not leave the impression that it'll take us till August to do something that's simple.
I like setting low expectations. It's a new boss.
I'm glad you intervened.
Yes.
And said, yeah, we can do.
But it sounds like there's something to work off of somewhere, there's a brief.
Well, and there are plenty examples of what not to do.
Yep.
Chronicled across YouTube.
All right. Board Committee Reports. Recreational Facilities Authority. You had a meeting, I believe.
Well, they did have a meeting, and I attended, and Mr. Carney's.
Make sure you've got your mic where it's good.
Yeah, I attended in Mr. Carney's place, and. Yeah, I attended in Mr. Carney's place and they were still working on fodder stack.
April twentieth?
Yes.
Twenty, is it six? Twenty?
Twentieth. The only reason I know is my birthday, so I kind of, yeah, thanks.
Birthday.
Yeah.
Free entry?
Yeah, yeah.
I would encourage everybody to participate in that one way or another. Having done that race myself, having someone at the top of each of those three hills cheering you on is key. But, and they were working on park improvements. It seemed to be going very well. It's my first meeting, so, yeah, great people.
Public Safety Committee, we have not met. The clearing kind of took over that.
Yeah, we'll get that set up here sometime soon.
Planning Commission.
Oh, when you all plan, when you all have the Public Safety Committee, would you please let me know those dates? Because I know there were some things that were brought up at the pedestrian and safety meeting that are really, Public Safety Committee matters more than the citizen group matters. Planning Commission met. We worked on the two ordinance changes that you'll see this evening. We did not have any applications to work through. It was just that.
Fire Levy Board.
I was out of town, so I was not there, but Mr. Curry was.
I was there. The, the group was fully represented except for Mr. Carney, worked through the bills from each of the seven companies and the budget requests for the association. Association hasn't had a request over the last couple of years because they're working off a balance. That holiday from association budget request is over and they've requested, I believe, a hundred and two thousand dollars. We, Bonnie and I have asked for some details on their past year expenditures just so we can fully understand that they're annually recurring or if there's, that a hundred and two is really needed and I'm sure it is if they ask for it. And the Fire Levy Board endorsed it regarding all the other companies. I believe the total was in the eight hundred and thirty, forty thousand dollar range. So add to that the hundred and two, add to that the funding for Chester Gap, which Warren County has stated they will include in their budget again this coming year. And add to that the Sperryville Pilot. And I believe funding's going to be tight in the Fire Levy Fund. And so Bonnie's not with us today, so she can keep cranking away at the budget.
I, I know that there's been a couple of emails about the, the legal bills at the Fire Levy Fund.
Yes.
And I just, I certainly don't want volunteer companies to get stuck with legal bills. But it certainly seems to me like they should be addressed with VFIS if they're VFIS eligible.
Yes.
And not cycled into the, the, you know, bill pay slash budget ask for the following year. Because I, I don't want us to kind of see elongated shadows when in fact it should be a smaller amount that's part of the request.
The different companies handle reimbursables differently and that's something maybe would be good for the Fire Levy Board to handle in, in recommended guidelines to the board. Some of them, in, at the period of expenditure, list the expenditure and submit the report. And then on a, on their next period of expenditure, every six months, list a negative. And then so it's kind of flows in, flows out and everything averages out over time. Others just never show it at all because they're offsetting and they don't even show it. And so maybe standardization there would be good. Because this informs the budget, you know, Bonnie and I are trying to look at the full, kind of the multi-year spend of some of these companies to make sure that we don't have weird anomalies happening in the budget that we recommend. Flint Hill, for example, for the first six months had like twenty-some odd thousand dollars of expenses because there was no EMS expenses at all. And then all of a sudden they're spooling up EMS expenses again. And so it's, it's very uneven right now. So we're trying to smooth things out. And any assumptions that we make, we'll make sure we make it clear to the board if it's different than just the plain Fire Levy Board numbers.
That's my only concern and I, I got the impression there was a split vote on that, right? Three of the members?
There was four for three extensions.
Well, it's come up and I think now the key is to clarify what, whatever our insurance policy does and does not cover.
Correct.
And then if it's clear that, that those kinds of legal proceedings are covered, then maybe to your point, you don't have a situation where potentially a quarterly spend then results in, in accumulation of maybe expenses that would inform a budget incorrectly.
Correct.
Which I think is the key point.
That is. I mean, I, I, I understand that DFIS is looking at reimbursement, which is wonderful news for everyone.
Right. And so I, I would say when Dr. Hill came to us and said, we really should have coverage for these sorts of things. Bonnie and I said, yeah, that, we should. And so we went to VFIS and we said, you know, what would it take to get coverage for these sorts of things? And so they looked into it and said, well, you already have coverage for injunctive relief. And we just didn't realize it. Now, whether that covers all, everything, including a non-monetary FOIA, we're not entirely sure. So that, we're sorting through that and, you know, claims will be made and they've already been noticed, but they'll be made and we'll see what happens.
Sounds good.
Moving into Treasurer's Reports, cash graph is looking good.
Yeah, everything looks good. And as we keep talking, big time capital projects, the Board of Supervisors, at some point in time, led by Ms. Jewell, no doubt, will be asked to look at some policies on how you want to manage your cash and designate some of your fund balance as being restricted or designated for a capital project. And the my message I keep telling you is if you look at this kind of low point, that tells you how much, and the curves kind of follow each other, right? So you, you can make, you can pay your bills as long as that low point's above zero. We would never want it to be zero because we want a buffer. In the past, it was below zero and we borrowed money, which is a bad plan. Because you could have an issue where there is a natural disaster and a low point. And so you're gonna make payroll, you somehow have to front natural disaster costs and you don't get reimbursed till later. So the good news is, is your low point is, you know, seven, eight million dollars. It takes some off for a buffer, you take some off for what is already restricted for other projects.
Yep.
And then you begin to understand what your truly undesigned fund balance is, is informed by cash. And then that can go towards upfront design costs and paying down some of the capital needs that you have, one-time needs. Before you, and I hope you understand just how much debt you need to go out and get. And in Ms. Jewell's preliminary presentation, she showed where you were several years ago when you had three bonds and eight million dollars borrowed and what sort of debt service that required. So you kind of start to put all these pieces together. So we'll, we'll be working to help the board understand all of your options as we move into this capital project.
What do you think is a good number, Gary? And this is maybe not a fair, kind of extemporaneous question. But what do you think is a fair amount to sort of just have as our, I don't want to say safety net as a county. But it's not that different from your household budget. Like you should have three months of bills at the ready plus an emergency fund. So I always think four, five million personally.
Yeah, for my personal account.
No, not for your personal, obviously, but for the county.
So most localities.
Dear diary.
Most localities do this based on their fund balance number, which is defined as the, is that amount at June thirtieth. Which is kind of, kind of the right side of this chart. But that's a really meaningless number in reality. It's really that low cash period. And many, many localities have the kind of double hump because they collect taxes twice a year. We do it once a year. And so our valley is a little bit deeper than if we did it twice a year. So the answer is, I'm not gonna answer and Bonnie and I will.
Eventually, we'll get there.
Bonnie and I will definitely make a recommendation. And I think what we should probably do is be getting some input from someone like Davenport and Company who do this for a living and make those recommendations. And most localities do have these policies that, you know, debt capacity policies on just how much debt that you will allow yourselves to get into that are measured on assessed value or total expenditures or any number of metrics. But also how much you want to have as that cushion that is not designated to anything.
Right.
That is the, the kind of the rainy day in case something weird happens at the wrong time. We went through a pandemic. We all thought it was doom and gloom. We ended up better than we would have otherwise. Who would have ever guessed that? So there, but there is a rainy day out there where it is the other way around. And we just need to be able to plan for that.
Oh, I'm sorry, you go.
So I, we've talked about this before and I'm really excited that we're moving into talking about it more. When can we expect to have some actionable information to move off of so that we can go properly into this courthouse endeavor with all of this information in front of us? I mean, I feel, I mean, this is critical and I know that we've had this discussion. I'm just wondering about the timeline here.
Yeah, and I think it's most important that, well, no one would say cost is not a factor in a courthouse. Obviously, you want to have a budget and constrain yourself to a budget. But what you need in a structure that will last the right amount of time is these two things pulling against each other, a Venn diagram and somewhere there's a sweet spot. And so we do need some information to help us get to that sweet spot. And so I agree, that is the case. But I don't, I don't, I haven't talked to Bonnie recently enough about this to know that whether she'll be talking about it in the budget or after.
As a separate thing. But it's really, it comes down to, to me, it seems like there are two key variables. One would be cash position.
Yep.
Think about it, think about it in terms of putting a down payment on your house. And then it's debt capacity, current capacity for debt, right? Um, I'm, sorry, I had a question on the graph.
Yep.
So two questions and I don't know, you're usually pretty good, I'm gonna put you on the spot. You're usually pretty good at knowing the answer to these types of questions, so we'll see.
The timing?
So August.
Quizbowl.
August of twenty twenty-three. Our, our cash on hand fell below the prior fiscal year, which is odd to me because you can see the graph.
This is twenty-four, actually, this, this square right here. Yeah, so if you see, and the reason it dipped down is because we delayed the bills, the tax bills. And so you delay the money coming in the door, you dip deeper into the pocket.
So what month was that?
This is August. If you looked in here, you'd see.
Was that because the state hadn't come up with their budget yet? There was some reason.
Right, but it was. I know it was twenty-four fiscal year, that's what I'm saying, but it was, it was August of twenty-three, right?
It was.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, right, so.
Yeah.
Exactly. And so the reason that happened is because, remember we were talking about, do we need to raise taxes? We not need to raise taxes. There's some give and take. And we said, let's just slow down. Let's hold, normally wanting, let's get the bills out so we get the cash rolling.
So that was the consequences. We tried to wrestle with the school budget gap.
Yeah.
Okay, then my second question is, I think it's February of, yes, exactly. What happened there?
So when you see big bumps like that, I, I can't speak to that exactly. It's likely a, a, a large infusion of money, ARPA payment or something like that.
That's what I was wondering.
Yep.
But I don't.
So, you know, things like that, you know, there's probably CARES and ARPA.
Because that would have been, that would have been February twenty twenty-three.
And we got that in two tranches. We'd have to go back and look, but it was probably a big infusion of cash for some reason. So more likely that than this, this, a bump up in the chart would be an infusion of cash or a much less, lower than normal expenditure. It's unlikely that it's the latter.
It's just wild because like on that first question, I mean, that just jumps out. It's like, well, what happened? Because year upon year, we've been improving our cash position while being mindful not oversaving to Ms. Smith's point, like how much is too much?
Yeah, and you can see the difference between kind of this belly and then this is when we really start to accelerate getting the bills out.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Tax bills out.
Sorry to belabor that.
Sorry to push you off of it.
I barely faulted.
I just realized I didn't plug my computer, so it's down here. I just need to pardon me.
Please hold.
Yeah.
Technical support.
Good thing the battery's good.
The one thing I noticed and I'm probably wrong, but it looked like under revenue for interest for the month of February.
Oh, that's exciting.
We made sixty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars in interest.
So you're, so let's go back to that other chart, right? So you're holding, you're holding fifteen and a half million dollars right now. That earns a lot of interest. You have to hold a lot of money now because you're not gonna get any more money until you send tax bills out again.
Yep.
So this is the time of year we really rake in interest. So the interest rates are up and you're at your highest cash point in the year.
Yep.
When you go back a few years, we were making nothing practically, right?
See Treasurer Nick is on, I just want to say thank you again.
Yeah, she does a great job.
Putting our money where we need to put it.
Yep.
There is still a hundred thousand dollars in interest over in Warren County banks on the broadband money, just.
It is, so that.
Earn an interest.
On that one.
And they told us that we couldn't and now we are, so thank you very much.
They sent it back.
I did have conversations with them about that. How were they going to? Hadn't planned for it and their response was they wanted to be consistent and they think what they're gonna do is send end of year disbursements as opposed to just credit it against one of our payments.
Oh, good.
So everybody can have the same, the same process, otherwise it'd get too confusing.
Because I think it was like eighty-six thousand dollars in interest last year from funds on deposit over there.
But that wasn't all.
No, that's our money.
You know, that's our money, but it keeps, our balance keeps growing and the interest rate is good. And so, yeah, that's.
On the economic statement, it breaks out, the year-to-date interest, and it was like eighty-six thousand dollars last year.
That sounds about right.
In terms of the configuration of the escrow account, though, presumably all the parties that paid into it are separately tracked.
Our, our money is on a, our own bank account.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and I think they finally realized that this was, this interest was gonna be an issue and they just separated everybody into their own bank account so they could be easily tracked separately.
Can they send it now?
Uh, well. An IOU in this business is nearly as good as having it in your pocket. Keep earning interest on the interest.
I'll keep tracking it. Thank you, Gary.
Yeah. I do want to point out in the County Administrator Reports, if you're ready to move on.
Sure.
I did download data from your.
Yes.
Your post-boundet speed display signs.
Here's the Rappahannock News headline coming up.
It's, there's a, there are many, there's just a ton of data, right? Every, there's a data point for every vehicle that goes by and so it's just overwhelming amount of data. So there's a few different ways you can boil it down. So there's a series of charts I tried to have kind of consistent. If you look on the chart on the kind of upper left, it tells you which sign this is. So this is Route five twenty-two northbound Woodville. So that's where it goes from fifty-five to thirty-five. So these are those that are going fifteen miles an hour or higher, they're averaging peak speeds. So as you can imagine, as you're driving towards this sign, you see it start flashing a very big number, you start slowing down. Maybe you slow down to thirty-five by the time you get to the sign, maybe you don't. So the peak speed is the peak speed and the average is it's, as they're slowing down, right? So you can see, these are counts of cars on these dates that their peak and average speed exceeded fifteen miles an hour over the thirty-five miles an hour. All right, now, the speed limit is not thirty-five until you get to the sign. So it is not necessarily a violation in that location. They could have slowed down to thirty-five by the time you pass the sign. Just want to make that clear.
So what is the green line?
That's the average.
Oh, okay.
And so the red is the peak. So you can see there's a lot of cars leading up to that sign that are going more than fifteen over thirty-five. And now you can see their peak speeds. The peak speed recorded on those days, eighty-one miles an hour, eighty-two miles an hour approaching the sign in Woodville.
And as somebody who lives on that road, a hundred yards from that eighty-one miles an hour right there, I can hear it inside my house.
So just showing.
And all the residents of Woodville can.
The lowest peak speed on any day. Uh, the lowest peak speed on any day over these kind of three weeks was sixty-eight. Peak, fastest car that day.
The lowest peak speed.
The fastest car that day.
I wonder, I was trying to be charitable while reviewing these numbers and think the best of people. And I did wonder if some of this could be emergency response at certain times.
Should be, yep.
Yep.
Certainly possible.
I have the same thought.
Then I do wonder if there's people that out there that are just trying to get high score on the new machine.
Well, I, so the signs, the machines are programmed so that they won't give you a high score, it just gives you dashes. If, what, if you get over a certain amount, it doesn't display the speed.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Well, anecdotally, since it's northbound, you know, first responders speed through town going the other way.
That's true.
Always southbound. I mean, it does happen rarely the other way, but it's usually from Sperryville.
Yeah.
There's only one sign in this entire batch that really, uh, shows the violators, and that's in Flint Hill because it's within the speed zone.
Right.
Right? Uh, so then some histogram showing you, uh, peak speed again of just how fast people are going. So most people are going fifty-one to fifty-five as they approach that sign, and maybe that makes sense, right? It's, they're in a fifty-five zone heading into a thirty-five. Um, and some people are going really slow, maybe they must have just turned out of a driveway. And then you can see that for each week, and I'm not gonna.
Wait, so is that an average or is that a?
This is, this is the peak speed.
Okay, peak.
Yeah.
Okay. I see, I see. That's really pretty consistent.
Okay, so now it's, uh, five twenty-two northbound Sperryville, this would be next to the pseudo-driving range, right? Um, and so again, uh, same metric, or at least fifteen miles an hour. These vehicles approaching the twenty-five are in a forty-five mile an hour zone, right? I believe.
Yeah, right.
Uh, and they should slow down to twenty-five at that sign, so.
Isn't that shocking that they're approached?
Not that shocking.
Okay.
Yep. However, the peak speeds.
Here.
Yeah.
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one, so, oh, sorry, it's sideways here, but so.
Do you have a photo of the vehicle?
No, people keep asking, so that was between eleven-thirty and eleven-forty-five on that Friday, someone was going ninety-one.
We need to call dispatch, can you check this date and time?
And then on this, and so, you know, the data is so, granted, you can dig in, it's just overwhelming.
Right.
The amount of data, so this one was, I can't make it.
So these are, this is all off the permanent signs, right?
Yeah, we can do it off the other ones, it just gets to be all on them. So you can see again here, most cars are going forty-one to forty-five.
As they approach that.
Most people want to comply. Yeah, but you know, there's these five hundred fifteen, they're going fifty-one to fifty-five.
Just don't care.
Um, so Route five twenty-two southbound in Flint Hill, that's coming from Chester Gap. And they're, uh, they should be slowed down there to thirty-five mile an hour zone, right? So these are the people going at least fifteen miles an hour over in that, so it's quite a few people. Peak speed seventy.
In the village.
In the village.
This is on the, uh, the north side of.
Packing shed.
Yeah.
Right near Saddle.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Cruising on it.
Yeah.
What time of night was it?
These aren't paying, these aren't, they're.
Yeah.
Not behaving, there you go. This was between eight-thirty and eight-forty-five, between six-forty-five and seven PM.
Crazy.
So that's the fast side of town, no doubt. Uh, and then you can see generally, people are going thirty-one to thirty-five.
That actually made me feel better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, there's ten people going sixty-one plus. Uh, five twenty-two northbound Flint Hill, this is within the twenty-five, so you've already passed the twenty-five mile an hour zone when you come up kind of at the hill, and then, so you're soundly in a twenty-five mile an hour zone at this point in time. So you have this number of people exceeding the speed limit by fifteen miles an hour. At that middle of kind of town location, that's a lot. Uh, but peak speeds are a much more reasonable sixty-five.
Wow.
Yeah.
But every day, the lowest is fifty-one.
That's why we're losing businesses right off of five twenty-two.
The lowest peak speed, right? So it's an outlier of that day.
Yeah.
People are going fast.
I know the residents of Flint Hill will appreciate that you're being proven right.
And so you can see, most people are going thirty-six, twenty-six to thirty.
Yep.
Uh, but you have the, you know, the really speeders. There's like seven in the sixty-one plus.
I mean, forty-six, forty-six and above, I mean, that's all, that's quite a bit of cars, that's almost two hundred cars.
In a twenty-five mile an hour zone.
Yeah, twenty-five going above forty-six miles an hour.
Yeah.
For, for this, the temporary sign out, um, near Baldwin's gas station.
I could download that, yeah.
Could we, I mean, I don't, could we get a permanent one there? Because it's getting good reviews.
Um, we can ask, we can ask.
Okay.
And then we can move that temporary one back down to Sperryville, please.
Uh, so I've only got the four signs, um, Mr. Jenkins fixed a solar power issue at the one closest to the national park this morning, so.
Ready for spring, that's perfect timing.
Yeah, there was an issue with the solar panel not charging the battery and, uh, so the battery lasted about two weeks.
That's great.
And, but now it's, it's back, so, um, it's a kind of a pain to pull all this data and there's a thousand charts you could look at. Uh, you hear about from VDOT, the eighty-fifth percentile, so that it pulls all that information. So when it's time to, um, ask VDOT to put a, ask for them for a permanent sign at the Baldwin's location, for example, or at the, uh, Sperryville location across from the golf course, putting a temporary sign then, they're pulling the data and showing them, this data might be able to show them the value of doing it. Um, so right now, uh, the temporary ones are on Main Street, Baldwin's, and then down at Utown Road where it changes to thirty-five miles an hour. I've not pulled data from either of those yet.
Sure, it's kind of sort of makes speed bumps more interesting now.
And I saw another traffic speeding mitigation, um, device on Utown Road named Deputy Jenkins.
Good.
The other day.
Yeah, excellent.
I wonder what those numbers will be, I bet they'll be.
That's, that's crazy, kind of down there.
Probably high, uh, and so, uh, when I was in Arizona, they had speed tables everywhere, which is kind of a speed, hump, bump, uh, higher.
Yeah, yeah.
You slow down, you slow down. Now, it is in the traffic calming bucket for VDOT, but VDOT is very restrictive, I don't know where they allow you to do that stuff.
Thank you for doing all that.
I think those things can have unintended consequences.
Yep.
Especially if people hauling, I mean, I imagine hauling horses and any kind of stuff like that, it'd be terrible.
That's why they, they restrict them to neighborhoods mostly, so.
Yeah.
Um, was there any, I, did I keep up on that legislation where they were gonna allow locality cameras?
To check back into that, I don't know, I doubt they would get through the governor, but, um, there was some legislation to open up where localities can put speed enforced cameras, which now is construction zones and school zones. Sheriff has started working with.
Thanks, Jeff.
A firm that does that for our school zone.
So that's happening for our school zone?
No, it's just, there's some preliminary analysis and measurements have been taken. Um, but I don't know where she is on that, has to be, the sheriff and the county have to be involved, so she's.
But those talks are happening?
Yeah.
Interesting, for both school zones?
Uh, well, there are limitations in how far away from the school, and so they both might not be eligible.
Uh, cause the elementary.
Yeah, but this new law could change that, who knows? Um, and it only is pertinent when the school zone is flashing and on. And the sheriff was relating that one of her peers in, uh, I can't remember the county, basically caused the flashing lights to be on all day. Kids are in school, it's on all day, and, uh, it's probably a revenue generator on Tula.
Amen.
So.
Legal matters.
Um, uh, just obviously the board is aware that, uh, you were victorious in the Supreme Court relative to the appeal of the special exception. So that is excellent, uh, Mr. Goff and myself and Ms. Summers have been discussions on what's next relative to the enforcement case for all of this, which was parallel.
Exactly, four years. That's four years.
It's, it's a process. Um, um, the board denied this particular application, um, over a year ago, is eligible to reapply.
Yeah, it was March twenty twenty.
Um, you have the two Flint Hill cases, uh, the, the best of my knowledge, the appeals court has not set any dates. Uh, I checked on it when I released the agenda, I haven't looked at it in the last couple of days. Uh, there's the second case, uh, and as I noted, Bay Corp have assigned the same attorney for this, which makes a lot of sense.
Yes, thank goodness.
Uh, Caparuso is still mired, um, as, uh, Mr. Goff and I warned a long time ago. This is about family, family dynamics and difficulties in that family. And, um, citizens forced the hand and brought it to court, but it didn't resolve anything. We still have family dynamics causing problems, so we're hopeful that that will get resolved. And the sister will, um, take care of the site as soon as she can actually control it. Uh, Mr. Stevens' report wasn't on here earlier, it, it's now on here.
It is, good.
And somehow I did not attach the VDOT report, I definitely got it, so I will add that, um, after the meeting.
Okay.
Is Mr. Nesbit gonna touch on the, um, the safety report metrics that he presented to us next year, or last year at next month's meeting? I thought he said something at the last meeting, of bringing those to us soon.
He was gonna do an annual report and he, they've been looking at ways to invest the CSOI funds, maybe, which is safety funds. Um, but he will be at the May meeting.
Okay.
Uh, for a quarterly update and the public hearings.
Great.
So if there's something in specific that I'm not, it's not, what you're saying is not coming to mind, if you find something, just remind me.
I'll go back and look for that report, it was very instructive.
Yeah, okay.
All right, matters presented by the board. Ms. Comer. Ms. Smith.
Oh, I already asked for the portable housing study, um, so I, I can't, nothing comes to mind, maybe, give me a moment, please.
Mr. Whitson.
I just wanted to extend my condolences to, uh, the family of John Anderson, uh, who died recently, obviously a true native son of Rappahanna County and, uh, someone who, uh, was very generous in, in, uh, assisting with various county causes. And, uh, attended the funeral on Saturday, it was quite incredible to see the, uh, pour, uh, pouring of support for his legacy and his family. So, wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Mr. Carney.
Um, I wanted to bring up that, uh, as we go over the ordinance, uh, revisions and tidying up and stuff, I wanted to kind of ask you all how you felt about, uh, perhaps getting some outside legal counsel. Um, and I'm specifically thinking of, if it's possible, uh, Ms. Pandek, um, if she frees herself up from the BZA, which I think has engaged with her recently. Um, just because, you know, this process is gonna be, um, it's intense. And I think that we just need to make sure that we have, uh, just, you know, all of our Ts crossed and our Is dotted and such, so I just wanted to kind of talk about that as we go through it and see what you guys, you know.
Well, if the BZA has retained Ms. Pandek, I think we would be well served to retain someone else in the event there's ever a conflict.
Oh, I, I just meant if she released, not, she can't do it if she's with them.
Right.
Just if they're done with her, and then, but it doesn't matter, it could be somebody else.
Well, I mean, I think there was that matter in Craigler'sville that didn't go the county's way too, that she was, uh, recently involved in. So I would, I would personally prefer someone else.
Okay, but just generally speaking.
Yeah, conceptually speaking, I was just talking about broadly, legal counsel.
Yeah.
For this, for this, that, that, and I don't know how it works, I don't know how, if we retain somebody that's a planning commission, um, how that would work, but I, I just, I feel the need for.
Yeah, I mean, Art, it might make sense for Art to put out feelers, uh, generally, uh, the, uh, legal services is not beholden to the Public Procurement Act because they probably wrote the Public Procurement Act. So, um, you don't have to do RFBs or any of that stuff for lawyers. Um, so there's no, um, hoops to jump through from that perspective. Uh, but we would just want to understand, if you want staff to go beat, uh, the streets for people who might have an expertise in this area to assist, um, we would wanna know what we're empowered to do. Uh, because that led to a hornet's nest in the past.
What's that?
Seeking illegal services led to a hornet's nest in the past.
Uh, yes, we did.
That would be called brag one. Uh, so, uh, we just wanna know exactly what we're empowered to do.
Yep.
Before we do anything.
Okay, um, well, that, that's just the general, was the general idea, it's not specific to Ms. Pandek at all. It's more about just, should we do this? And I think that we probably should, or at least keep our eye on it. So, you're saying that you would need a motion or something?
If you want us to identify people who might be, um, willing and, um, have proper expertise, I think a motion to ask Art and I to go find a pool of candidates would be.
Okay, well, then I'll make that one.
Okay.
Can I ask this?
Hold on.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask you.
Sure.
Oh, is, what, what's, what's this person's job supposed to be?
Zoning, like, for instance, as we move through this process with redoing our ordinance, we're gonna have questions.
So this is gonna be like a consulting.
Yeah.
Attorney with expertise in.
Zoning, specifically, yeah.
And, uh, it's gonna be an hourly thing, is?
This is just why I wanted to bring this up, I, I wanted to just put it out there and I, I'm not suggesting that we need to, uh, we don't even need to take action right now, it's more just that, I, I just wanted to get the conversation going. And it's really about, I, I don't know, would it be that or would it be, you know, uh, uh, we just talk about a budget and all that kind of stuff? It's just that we are currently redoing our zoning ordinance and you have a lot on your plate. And we need to make sure that we have our bases covered as we move through.
I know when we started talking about the Berkeley group, I, and I bet you did here as well, thought they had a zoning legal expert on there.
And they use Pandek.
They, that's, I talked to Drew in Richmond and he said, we can get you Sharon Pandek, and I said, well, we kind of sort of already have her. Um, so we'll have to talk about this, but.
You certainly don't wanna pay Berkeley group a, a markup fee.
Yeah, no, I told Drew we'd, um, we'd be able to handle that. But, um, I just think from people that I've talked to anyway, you got RLEP hiring a lawyer, I've heard of another group that might be hiring a lawyer, I would much rather have a lawyer than.
But we have a lawyer.
Well, zoning specific, sorry. Um, that would be our, our go-to person that other people wouldn't have to spend the money on a zoning attorney.
Uh, your interests are not always gonna be aligned with those other groups.
True.
That's why independent counsel is important.
Yeah, but so in this process, Art, you might have some instances where you might, I don't wanna speak for you, but appreciate a little outside help where we can say, hey, just we need X, we need Y, I, I'm not thinking that we need to.
Give me an assistant county attorney for zoning and maybe then they could become a, uh, a county employer. Like, when I started out, I just billed the county, I was assistant county attorney and I just billed an hourly rate, I believe it was a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, and then just have them report to me and Gary, and then to the board. It's just a suggestion to kind of put, uh, I guess, uh, maybe a circle around or a fence around what they're supposed to do. And have some direct supervision that's extremely responsive to the board. Cause you know, I serve with your pleasure, so, and Gary tasked me, so this could also extend to that, that person with the title. I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, I think that's why you raised it, is to talk through how we would, how we could approach it. But I think we all agree, if anything matters in Rappahannock County, it's zoning.
Absolutely.
And no doubt, um, we're looking at compliance with the Code of Virginia through the ongoing work of the planning commission and the Berkeley group. So that was a key objective of all that effort because of the sign ordinance question and the constitutionality of our, our now far outdated sign ordinance. So we definitely, conceptually, have been taking steps through the Berkeley group to make sure our ordinance aligns with the Code of Virginia. But I think also, um, and cer- recent events have brought this into the spotlight, you know, where, where might we need, um, help? So, I mean, whether we take action on this or not, I, I appreciate the, at least, the conversation, maybe we just think about it and. Maybe what we should do is then just have it as an agenda item for next month and we can kind of cogitate on it and just.
Okay.
Come back and.
Makes sense.
Good idea.
I, I hope that everyone knows how very critical our zoning strength is to me and I think paramount to the people of Rappahannock County. I'm just going to also say that we keep spending money on staff and jockeying people around. And, you know, everything comes, nothing we do is for free, everything comes at a cost. So if we are thinking of taking on additional staff or additional, um, advisory-type positions, even if they're temporary, we need to be mindful of being specific in our approach. we need to be mindful of being specific in our approach and completing it on a task basis so that we're not creating positions, permanent positions for temporary issues or needs. Because I think there is a real danger of that. And I hear and understand and agree with the concerns over expertise, uh, on planning and zoning. And it is very much a niche legal background. Um, and our other, uh, challenge is always finding someone who understands our county, that we're almost trying to counter-engineer what everyone else does.
Yeah.
And, uh, trying to get all of those things to align. We just need to be specific in our approach.
Well, sir, I agree.
Um.
I agree.
I do hear and agree with the cry for additional legal interpretation or, uh, review of our ordinance to make sure it's sound. And what we find ourselves in with the BZA is an unfortunate situation. And, and with that, with that situation in general, it's unfortunate that we, that, uh, we find ourselves in this position. However, we can anticipate every.
Right.
Situation. It's, it's impossible to anticipate how things will unfold, how things would be interpreted. And certainly, things can sometimes have ramifications that were never anticipated when they were adopted. So I, 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 I do think it is something we need to look at. I think we'll need to be very careful with our selection.
Yeah, I totally agree. And I, I really only brought it up in the context of this document is now, though it has been amended and updated, almost forty years old. And I think, Ms. Smith, you brought it up, I can't remember when, but a while ago, that this is a pretty big deal.
It is a big deal.
Doing it, so it's really only in that context that I'm thinking about this and saying, okay. You know, we, we need to be, uh, make sure that we're, we're covered. But I agree with you that we should be surgical about it and, um, yeah.
Remember, Falkir has a, a, a planning, uh, staff of twenty people. And that was five years ago, so it's probably more than that now. So why don't we just take their ordinance?
We don't want their ordinance.
We're gonna talk about that tomorrow.
Into trouble on that one.
So, uh, I made a note to have an agenda item next month to talk about this more.
All right.
Totally, and, uh, so we, we might bounce around some ideas, but we're not gonna certainly take any action.
Ideas, and then we can continue talking about it. Let's see what we got.
The only thing I have is the reminder of the spring swing, um, event at Company Four on March twenty-third. From seven to seven-thirty, there's gonna be an instructor, so you can get some lesson. And then from seven-thirty to nine, uh, there's the dance and there'll be munchies available and non-alcoholic beverages and stuff like that.
Is it a swing dance?
It is a swing dance.
There'll be physical therapy.
Spring.
And the ambulance will be right there.
Yes. Yes, so that's all I have.
What, what is, um, I, and I just don't mean to interrupt, but someone did ask me earlier and I don't, I honestly didn't know the answer. What is, what is the anticipated, uh, content of the meeting tomorrow?
The clearing.
Uh, it's facilitated discussions regarding the affirmations and challenges and a group-led discussion. Uh, presumably on how we can communicate in ways that'll help us move towards solutions to those challenges.
Okay.
Group, group-defined solutions, I think, is the outcome.
What time is, uh, tomorrow?
Three o'clock.
So are we, we're at the base?
Yes.
Yes.
And we're in the big room?
We're in the room all the way on the left, where the boardwork session.
Well, that's not gonna be big.
That's, that's the room where.
The certain, the two per company at the table and then chairs.
Yep.
All right, uh, recess until seven?
Uh, did you have anything else you were?
No, that's it. Thank you, though. I appreciate it, Gary.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Yep.
Okay.